WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader, Member FDIC.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the presentation of colors by the YEI Color Guard. Please remain standing for the pledge to the flag by District Commissioner Mickey McDonald and opening prayer by District Commissioner, First District, Justin Miller.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Most kind and gracious having with Father, Lord, we thank you for the day. Lord, we thank you for everyone that was able to come out tonight. Lord, we just pray that you'd lead in God our decisions that we make for our county, Lord. We pray that they'd be the best serving to you, Lord. Lord, we at this time pray for anyone that's have lost loved ones, Lord. We just pray that you touch them in a mighty way. Pray for everyone that's dealing with this virus, Lord, that you'll just heal them. Lord, we just pray that you be with each and every person here, Lord, that on their way home. Pray that you keep us safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Just please remain standing just for a moment, just for a moment of silence. This morning, our former county Executive, Mr. Mike Cross, passed away. Just take for a second moment of silence if y'all don't care. Thank you. Ms. Marilyn, would you care to call the roll, please?
Mickey McDonald?
Here.
Justin Miller?
Here.
Rod Williams?
Here.
Kim Davison? Benny Hughes?
Here.
Robert Cooper?
Here.
Lester Gooding?
Here.
Leon Stepp?
Here.
Larry Cooper?
Here.
Julie Matthews?
Here.
Nine present, one absent.
Nine present, one absent. We have a quorum. Consideration of approval of commission minutes from August 16th and August 23rd. Do I hear a motion to accept those?
I smooth that we accept them as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Leon Stepp to accept them. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes. We have three notaries, item number seven. Jeffrey W. Green. Melanie Stephan. And Kay Rains.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Justin Miller to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes. Item number eight. Proclamation honoring the retirement and career of Dwight Dixon, District Conservationist for the Natural Resource Conservation Service with the USDA. Mr. Dwight, would you care to please come forward while I read the proclamation and Mr. Benny Hughes will present it to you just in a moment, please? Proclamation of the Fintress County Board of Commission honoring the career of Dwight Dixon, District Conservationist for the Natural Resource Conservation Service, USDA. Whereas Dwight Dixon's career has spanned over 34 years with 24 and a half of those years being served in Fintress, Pickett, and Scott Counties. Dwight's driving force through the years has been to assist landowners, alerting them to the available USDA programs and helping them to improve and preserve the air, soil, and water in the Cumberland Plateau region for future generations. Among Dwight's accomplishments are the following. Whereas Dwight installed the first chicken compost facility in the state of Tennessee some 32 years ago. This was progressive technology at the time that is now a commonplace practice in Fintress County. Every chicken farmer in Fintress County that desired to have this type of compost facility now has one. And whereas Dwight has installed numerous dairy waste compost facilities for every dairy farmer desiring this type of facility in Fintress County. And whereas Dwight has instrumental, was instrumental in the Bear Creek Watershed Project in Scott County where all aquatic life was dead. Bear Creek is once again thriving with aquatic life and the Bear Creek Sports Complex was built in a reclaimed mining site nearby. The outdoor recreation area bustles with activity and offers bike trails, soccer, and baseball fields for community use. And whereas each year Dwight held an agricultural educational day for all fifth grade students in Fintress County. In addition, Dwight taught numerous programs in our local elementary schools, judged science fairs, and conducted annual poster contests for Fintress County students. And whereas each year Dwight recruited high school students to participate in an environmental competition called Enviro-Thon. On seven different occasions, the Enviro-Thon team from Fintress County won the state competition and traveled on to participate in national championships. These students had an opportunity to travel to various places such as Arizona, Pennsylvania, and Canada, providing exposure for these students on a national level. Whereas Dwight has worked tirelessly to bring in over $15 million of federal funds to this region during his tenure of service. Under Dwight's enthusiastic leadership, Fintress County has seen an increased influx of federal funds made available to local landowners and remarkable improvement in the preservation of our natural resources. Whereas in addition, Dwight has invested in our community by serving as a member of the Rotary Club, served on the Boys and Girls Club Board, serving on the Industrial Development Board, and serving as an active member of First Baptist Church in Jamestown. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Fintress County Executive and Board of Commission would like to express their sincere appreciation to Dwight Dixon, his many years of service to the Fintress County and for his dedication to ensure the environmental success of the Cumberland Plateau region. Benny, if you would, if you step around and present that to Mr. Dwight. Thank you very much, Dwight. Wait just a second, Benny, they'll get a picture there. Item number nine. Proclamation honoring the Clark Range Raider Team on winning the 2021 National JROTC Fitness Championship. Would y'all please come up, please? And Commissioners Robert Cooper, I mean Lester Gooding, and Leon Stepp will present you with an award there just a second. I will read this. Proclamation in the Fintress County Board of Commission honoring the JROTC Raider on winning the 2021 National JROTC Fitness Championship. Whereas Clark Range JROTC is known for their perseverance, dedication to their teammates, dedication to their education, and dedication to their community. And whereas Clark Range was the only Army Junior ROTC team selected to represent Tennessee, Kentucky, Indiana, Ohio, and Michigan. And whereas Caden Upchurch, Kalista Hamby, Leanna Norris, Chloe Daly, Peyton Seber, Zach Roberts, Nathan York, McKinley Westphal, Trent Lures, John Flowers, Luke Guy, and Timothy Martin represented Clark Range JROTC Raider at the 2021 National JROTC Fitness Championship at Daytona Beach, Florida on May 1st, 2021, and won as first place overall champions. And whereas in five events with nine cadets competing in each event, Clark Range won first place in the 3K run, seated four pound ball throw, standing broad jump, and pull-ups, flexed arm hang, fourth place in physical team test, and first place overall champions. And whereas cadet Leanna Norris won fifth place Ultimate Fitness Female, cadet Timothy Martin won fifth place Ultimate Fitness Male. And whereas in pull-ups, cadet John Flowers won second place overall, and Zach Roberts won first place overall. And whereas the physical team test consisted of running with a 12-pound ball on the beach going through a tunnel, over tires to a maze, pulling a team member on a sled down the beach, and then returning through each obstacle again. In the afternoon, at the Ocean Center Arena, the six cadet males did one minute of pull-ups each totaling 171 pull-ups. And the three females did the flexed arm hang totaling of 248 seconds. Next, the cadets did the standing broad jump where they jumped as far as possible from a fixed position for a total of 821 inches. The Raider Team finished the competition with a seated ball throw for a total of 2,157 inches to win as first place overall champions. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Fintress County Executive and the Fintress County Board of Commission wish to express our congratulations to the Clark Range JROTC Raider Team for their fortitude and commitment to set goals and work hard to reach these goals. We express our gratitude for the JROTC Raider Team representing Fintress County with honor and pride. Thank you all very much, Mistress, if you'll give them a dear cord. Sure do appreciate it. Get our team together here and challenge you.
Don't have them turn around.
I miss them that day.
Yes, thank you guys.
Come on in, Kristen. Thank you all very much. Alrighty, item number 10. Consideration of approval to rescind the Resolution 2021-29 authorizing a capital outlay note of $2,100,000. This resolution has been replaced by Resolution 2021-30, which was passed at the August 2021 Commission Meeting to allow the capital outlay note in the amount of $2,950,000. Tyler, would you like to explain it just for a second?
We originally passed a resolution for debt issuance for the county only. And we ended up adding the highway debt in as well. And this just takes out the original resolution to expand it to where we are now resolution we passed.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Against.
Benny? Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Eight, four, one against, and one absent.
Eight, four, one against, one absent. Motion passes. Item number 11. Consideration of approval of Resolution 2021-31 to affirm compliance with Federal Title VI regulations. Does anyone have any questions on that out there? It has to do with civil rights. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Motion passes. Item number 12 is consideration of approval of appointment of Shelley Dalton as the Fintress County Title VI Coordinator and approval of the updated Title VI policy for Fintress County. Shelley? Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leon Stepp. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Item number 13. Consideration of approval the appointment of Shelley Dalton as the American with Disabilities ADA Coordinator and confirmation of the ADA public notice and grievance procedures. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any further discussion? Roll call, I mean, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Item number 13 passes. Item number 14. Consideration of approval of the reappointment of Russell Tompkins, Joe McCrogan, and James Billbury to the E911 Board of Directors. Terms will expire in October of 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey? Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Nine, four, one, absent. Motion passes. Item number 15. Consideration of approval of Fintress County Highway Department inventory list effective July 1, 2021. I looked at and now things were there in the list except for what was out on the road and on the roads at that time, working on highways and such. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Commissioner Mickey McDonald, second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. Item number 16 is consideration of approval of funding for the Fintress County Industrial Development Board Site Development Project as approved and recommended by the Fintress County Grant Committee in the amount of $58,000. Is someone here to address this? Mr. Joe Wheeler and Mr. Brian Johnson, please come up.
I think we can pretty much all.
Well, in your packet, we had a couple of pages there that kind of explained what we're doing. We had a, I think most of you know, we had a grant back earlier in the year for half a million dollars to do some site work at the industrial park. So when we got the bids, first time we laid out the bid and nobody bid it. And then we did some other advertising and talked to some other people. And we, the last time we bid it, we had two bidders. And the bids came in way higher than what we were expecting. And according to the ladies that we deal with at Upper Cumberland Development District, this is pretty common right now because everybody's so busy. Nobody has time, so they're beating things high. But we've only got till the end of year to do this, so we can't wait. So on the second page there, it kind of shows a breakdown of what we're talking about. Our lowest bid was 698, 698,000. The money in the grant that was allocated for construction was only 411,000, which shows the amount over the budget. And then the next column there shows, brings that number down. And then we're adding, we're just showing you that the ID board is matching 41,000 of the original grant. That was our portion of it. So the total amount not funded by the grant's 328. And our proposal is if, you know, the ID board is going to put in 228,000 and we're asking the commission to do the additional 58,000 over what was budgeted to try to get this project moving. Because we sure don't want to give this grant back. And if we start, if we start decreasing it, that's just going to add more cost for engineering and stuff for, for us. So anybody got any questions? And I can, might be able to answer.
What all are they doing out there?
It's, it's called mass grading or a pad-ready site. And another reason, another reason the bids are so high is because there's a, there is quite a bit of rock out there. And there's some concern about how much is going to be involved in that. So that's another reason the bids were kind of high, really high. But when it gets done, they will be ready to then start a building pad. You know, bringing gravel in, digging footers, that kind of thing. It's not actually a pad site, but it is a pad-ready site. And you can see there on the thing, it covers like right at seven acres, I think it is. And that would include, you know, parking for trucks, loading docks, that kind of thing. So there's quite a bit of area required.
Three quarters of a million dollars, a lot of money. Clean off spot, but that's best we can do, I guess.
Correct. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Lester Gooding to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper and Mr. Rod Williams. Is there any further discussion, any questions you'd like to ask or any further discussion?
Did you say this grant would run out when? The end of the year?
The, the grant actually runs out the end of the year. But they've told us as long as we're moving dirt before then, that they'll extend it. You know, they'll extend, we don't have to be done by the end of the year.
But if you've not started by the end of the year?
Definitely not. It's gone then.
How long you think this project will take to get done?
I can't tell you right now, Rod, because of the current situation. But you know, we were talking to some of the contractors and things and they, they think it will go into next year for sure. But I don't think it would take more than, you know, maybe January, February, sometime in that range. I'll know more, once we get, we let the contractor know that they're, we've accepted their bid, I can find that out and get back with you guys.
Who was the contractor?
The low bid, it was Jay Hicks.
I will say this, last year we had a, a firm that made feed. And we actually came in, there was there in another spot in, I believe in Bledsoe County that were in the two final people. And they actually went to, they did go to Bledsoe County because what my understanding was because they were ready and could, you know, accept to start doing the building and such. So, but they're getting several looks right now. And right now, there is one gentleman right now who's wanting to put an ammunition spot in out there if he can get his funding. I almost say he'd almost be here if he can get his funding. I mean, that's the feeling that I've got. And so they'll let him have land or work with landline somewhere out there. But is there any more discussion? If not, roll call, please, Marilyn.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Motion passes. Thank you. Work hard. Thank you. Thank you guys. Item number 17. Is consideration of approval of the following budget amendments. This was to the Justice Center for their video arrangement grant in the amount of $99,712. Anyone like to deliberate on that for a moment, Tyler?
That's the full amount of the project besides the administrative costs to the grant writer. I don't know what her fee is at this time, but our goal is to try to take that maybe out of the existing budget instead of hitting, hitting fund balance or anything for that.
I think she agreed to a 3%, so is that right? Very minimal in comparison. Y'all already approved that.
And this here's the grant that came through.
Yeah, this is the actual money. And we're planning on October 4th and 5th, BIS, because this is a sole source provider, we'll be here to do the installation. And then they'll be back periodically to do some training. And it's a great thing because we have, in the last month with the spike in COVID cases throughout the county, sure could have used this, not only in criminal courts, but in DCS courts, juvenile courts, different things. This would have come in handy and it sure will come in handy.
There's no match to this either, is there?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to accept as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Marilyn.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Nine, four, one, absent. Motion passes. The next one. Board of Education in the amount of $23,986.63. This is to align budget with the voluntary pre-K estimated budget. Any, anything on this?
When we originally set up volunteer pre-K budgets, a lot of times they have an estimate. They don't have their final numbers in yet. This just lines it up.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Nine, four, one, absent. Amendment passes. The next one is a senior center in the amount of $213. This is for donations to the senior center. This is what usually the same, mostly the same amount comes to for people to donate something to the senior center. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Justin Miller, second by Commissioner Julie Matthews. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Nine, four, one, absent. Amendment passes. Nine four one absent, amendment passes. The next one is solid waste in the amount of $18,715. This is for the site development at the Clark Range Convenience Center.
Just to cover the change order that we passed in the last commission meeting. I didn't have a budget amendment prepared for the last commission meeting for the change order that went through.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any further discussion? How much do they like being moved out there? I passed by there the other day and with nobody there, but it looked like they were pretty close. They're hoping to have it. I talked with the state and the state, we're telling them by no later than November because the bids for the bridge is going out now. It was in October, but they're still working on some rock. So right now the bids for the bridge is in December, so they want to make, hope and make sure everything's done. But talking with Philip, he believes it could be in the latter part of October or the, around the first of November to have it, have it all taken care of. Nothing else, roll call please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent, next amendment.
We certainly don't want to slow down the road any.
No, not no longer, after 50 years. The next one is COVID Grant One Capital Outlay of $25,000. This is to put the money back into the budget from Governor's Support Grant for concrete that we all passed, that y'all passed. And it's at the fairgrounds over there to finish that up.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes and Robert Cooper. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent, amendment passes. Last amendment is for the Justice Center in $62,069. This is for insurance recovery to replace cameras that were damaged by the lightning strike that hit up there at the jail and knocked all the security stuff out and the generator out.
Insurance came back. Originally, they were just going to pay for the repair, which was 12, $13,000. They came back and after meeting with Becky Brock, said that they would pay for the full amount of replacement of the system to make sure that it was reliable. And we didn't have any liability issues being in the back of the jail.
It actually blew out of those, it just blew them plum out. Blow, blow doors open, blow the breakers out of the box and bars out of the
Well, now that, this doesn't include that. There's more to come.
Yeah.
Transfer switches are out and some light switches, so there's still more to come with that one lightning strike. So this just covers the cameras.
It took a direct hit some way to something. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve it. Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leon Step.
So that everyone's aware, we done this through, I, I signed off on this as emergency purchase. So we didn't bid it. I went with somebody local, the lowest bid. I collected three quotes, but the way ordering any equipment is at this time, it's delayed. So we wanted to get that fixed as soon as possible evidently being, being in the jail. So that, that's the reason that this was not bid out and you won't see a bid come through. Well, I did quote, I do have quotes on it, but it was, this was the lowest quote and the guy is local. So he can, he'll be here to be able to service that system if we have an issue. The previous system was put in by a company out of Dallas, Texas. It's no longer in business.
And you're looking at recovery time, Gooding? You're looking at recovery time from someone out of town, two to three hours to get here to fix it. He'd be within an hour to be here because he's local.
Yeah, when they're available. I mean, that's, that's, and some of the other folks wouldn't bid repairing because the system was hit so hard. They wouldn't put any guarantee on just repairing that system. They just wanted to replace. He is, what was my next lowest bid? Jimmy was right at $100,000.
Right at $100,000.
I mean, he's significantly lower than the others as well, so.
If you want to see how this will operate, you, you can go out to, or we'll go out, or take you out to York Institute. They have the same system in there. It's just, they have like 80 cameras out there right now, is what they have out there. Some of them have, one camera has as many as nine cameras inside it. So you can, yes, yeah, they can actually zoom in from the office. They can zoom in to reading driver's license numbers at the football field. I mean, it's just, it's really, it's really something. But anyway, any more discussion?
Did the county not have insurance recovery?
They did their coverage, I thought he was saying, yeah.
This is insurance recovery.
We have trouble hearing you over there.
Sorry. That, that budget amendment shows the money going into insurance recovery and being spent out of the maintenance line.
Anything else? Roll call.
Mickey?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Rod?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Robert?
Four.
Lester?
Four.
Leon?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Julie?
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent, amendment passes. And other business, I've got down here, asked Tyler for clarification on the pay for the newly adpositioned in Gina's office.
So, and I did, I don't have that data here with me, but I think there was a, somebody, there were some upset employees thinking that somebody in Gina's office was coming in making $31,000 or something like that. And, and I think the paper actually already clarified it on their end because they had published that in that next paper, the news or something that said that. But it's already been clarified there, but she wanted to be clarified in the minutes that I think they're coming in making 1125 an hour, which the $31,000 is what it takes for insurance and any, any of your FICA and all that that, that the county does pay. So the amendment was for that amount, yes, but the employee will make 1125 an hour is their gross pay.
I appreciate you clarifying that. I had to clarify that on my own to two or three people, so.
I think, I think there's been a lot of
I'm glad we put that in the public now, so they don't
I think there's been a lot of questions about that.
Why is this person making 31,000?
That's in Gina's office, the circuit court clerk. I think she caught a lot of heat over that.
Not just her, by the way. Not, another couple of things, on the ID board, Mr. Baines has resigned. And we've asked Mr. Harvey Stowers, the mayor of Jamestown, that will keep someone in Jamestown, will keep the mayor on the ID board, and he did accept that today and that will expire 2/20 of '22. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes and second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise. And something that I would like for you all to think of before the next commission meeting in October, at the park in, in Clark Range, we are, are seeing just a lot, a lot, a lot, for some reason, more people than there has been in the past. And just for y'all to give thought before the next meeting, to think about it and come in and we'll talk about it, whoever wants to, whatever. I'd like to have some, be able to put someone out there four hours a day for five days a week on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We are going out there now, maintenance people are on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays and are emptying all the trash and checking on the maintenance and such as that, if there's, you know, if there's anything torn up. We are having, are still having a lot of vandalism out there. And the folks that have been on the board out there for several, several years, 25 or 30 years, seem to think we can have someone out there that will knock a lot in the hat, in the head just to have someone visual out there that'll be doing things, you know, cleaning, maybe doing some work, yard work. You know, some of the stuff might be torn up also. But that's just something I'd like for y'all to think about, you know, between now and the next meeting, if you don't care.
What about the cameras that they put up out there that's supposed to be viewed by 911?
Robert, what you got here to address that?
Well, I understand that if they're not working, I've got Twin Lakes which put them in. Checking on that to see, they're actually recording out there, which is something about the internet which not feed 911.
They're working on it.
Anything else from anyone tonight?
Oh, yes, I have a, a little bit of a deed issue presentation, it's not an issue, it's actually a very good thing. You all voted, I think, back in November, no, you all voted in January of 2021 to accept the Planning Commission's proposal to close a section of Misty Mountain Road. And the landowners had donated another section and they'd actually built the road to spec. And our road supervisor, Joey Reagan's been out and he's approved that new section of road. So y'all had voted to close the quote unquote old section upon acceptance of the new section and then allow us to deed off that old section to the adjoining landowners that did the donation. I have that deed here for Commissioner Johnson, or Executive Johnson to sign. Basically, we've gotten the deed back from the landowners dedicating the new road to us. Joey has accepted it and you all, like I said, have already approved this. I just wanted to let you know that it's a done deal and that section of road in Black House Mountain to Misty Mountain Road is a whole new section. The old section's been closed, so, and they're signs, they're rerouting people. And we all think this will be a good thing, but just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
And talking about, the state got a letter from the state this week that they have purchased another, or are about to purchase or acquire, so I assume it's purchasing, another seven acres next to the Polk Hall of Land down there because this dark sky deal is really, this county blowing up. You know, a lot of people showing up, so they have bought another seven acres adjoining that property. And then also the, where all the razors and side by sides and such goes down to Black House Mountain and such as that, the state's going to come in and hopefully before spring, hopefully get start this, this fall on it to build a, where the roads fork, where we go store 14 roads or the Black House Road there. They're hopefully coming down there to make an acre or two acre parking lot down there so people can actually, instead of sitting on the highway, on the roadways, they'll be doing it in the, in the parking lots. Anything else?
Uh, update on ambulances. I don't, I don't know if everyone was aware, but we had two ambulances down at one time and only four ambulances covering the county. Putnam County was gracious enough to let us borrow one of theirs and we're still running it. I do, I did see the one coming back from Sharps today, so they were taking it for mechanical inspection. I hadn't heard whether it passed. I'm sure that it did, but I hadn't talked to Tony this evening since then. We're getting together and to equip that ambulance, so me, Larry, and Jimmy went to Pennsylvania and picked up a used ambulance that was pretty close miles, but we felt we got for a really good price. And they're working on getting it going so that we've got an ambulance on the road. 852, which was the new one we bought last year, has a weight issue or a suspension issue or something going on with it. They've, they've actually agreed to take care of that. So it's gone to Alabama to be worked on, so it's, it's out of the county. And we had one with the transmission down. Transmission was supposed to be there today, but I've not heard whether it came in or not, so. We wore down some ambulances, but we've, we're, we're still moving. And then, of course, once we get both of those back, we should have, you know, sufficient amount to be able to cover and cover any on-call crews as well.
Speaking of the ambulance service, Tony said to use this back, was it one or two positions having a full, two positions having a full crew back at this time? But they were, we're down about seven. Anyway, anything else? Hear a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Commissioner Benny Hughes, second by Commissioner Leon Step. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary likewise, the motion, meeting adjourned.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.